To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jacobs, we're on? We're ready? Good, go. All right. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines, with in relation to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting, the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment, has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo.
Here.
Ms. Fritsch.
Here.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Ms. McElhenny.
Here.
Ms. Camello.
Here.
Mr. Najarian.
Here.
Mr. Book.
Here. Thank you. Do we have any resolutions for approval this evening?
Yes, we have Resolution 202-1-04, Summer, Block 14501, Lot 4.01, One Summers Drive, granting a variance to construct a fence. Also, 202-1-06, Listash, Block 23202, Lot 42536, Wycombe Street, granting administrative approval to modify the plan. Also, 0221-07, Flood, Block 5602, Lot 15, Seven Highland Drive, granting approval of a variance to construct a deck. Eligible are Mr. Costanzo, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. McElhenny, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, and Mr. Book.
And that's on all three of those resolutions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve and second on those resolutions?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny.
Yes.
Ms. Camello. Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Also, there's one more. That's okay. 202-1-05, Van Schoijk, Block 2201, Lot 47, 636 William Street, amending prior approval to add goats to variance as emotional support animals and service dogs. Eligible are Mr. Costanzo, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. McElhenny, Ms. Camello, and Mr. Najarian.
Need a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny.
Yes.
Ms. Camello.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
And that's it for resolutions, you see?
Do we have any minutes for approval?
Yes, we do. We have approval of minutes for February 3rd, 2021.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Some...
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny.
Yes.
Ms. Camello.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have two vouchers. I have one voucher for King Reporting, an amount of $250, and I have a second voucher for Danielle, or Diane Faustino, as vendor, an amount of $150. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the vouchers and pay the bills?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny.
Yes.
Ms. Camello. Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes. Thank you. Looking at the agenda, I don't see anything in H for announcements. Mr. Gardner, are there any announcements that I don't know?
I believe there's one, and Mr. Pfeffer is here, so we'll take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Do it formally.
Good evening, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Number two on the agenda, Mike Demore. Last time we were here, the board, as you may recall, the board had asked for a, I think, a site plan, or a revised site plan, to be submitted. I had spoken with Mr. Bourne, the engineer in the project. He indicated he was almost completed it, but did not have it completed in time to submit it 10 days before the hearing. So accordingly, we're just asking to carry that to the next hearing, so Mr. Bourne can finish the site plan, and we can provide it to the board for review.
I think in conversation, we were looking at March 17th as the next available date.
That's fine.
That works?
Yes.
And I believe there's a waiver of time. There's no issue there for the...
No issue, and we'll submit it within at least a minimum 10 days before the hearing.
All right.
So if we may make the formal announcement for anyone on participating virtually as well. Ladies and gentlemen, application to more variance 3343, on 440 Basso Street. That matter is being carried to the March 17, 2021 meeting, without the need for further notice. Anyone interested is directed to the municipal website, or the publication, newspaper publications for participation. I will just make it known to the applicant that I believe this is the third time, this would be the third time it's carried. The board has their tradition. After three times a matter is carried, that we ask that you renotice it.
Understood.
Just in case, so you're prepared.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. All right. I see no other announcements, no other announcements of which you're aware, Mr. Gardner?
I do have one announcement, a bit of good news. I saw today, and I'll forward correspondence tomorrow, that Judge Ford issued her opinion, the short version of this, is Judge Ford issued her opinion on the A&amp;A truck parts, and the board's actions approving it were upheld.
Oh, good. Excellent. Thank you. All right, I see nothing under matters for discussion, no administrative approvals. So then, before we move into applications, can we have the professionals sworn, and then introduced, please?
Gentlemen, if each of you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the information, testimony, questions, or comments you will present to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And through the chair, I guess if you can go around, introduce yourselves.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Mr. Kavitch, board traffic engineer.
Jeffrey Porro, zoning officer.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if there's, without any further ado, we'll move right into the applications. Our first application is Frank and Francine Siegel. It's variance 3349. Are you here? Come on up.
Though, Mr. Chairman, though I presume that Ms. Siegel may take the lead on this, let me, let me have them both sworn. Each of you kindly raise your right hand. Do each of you either swear or affirm that testimony, information, comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If each of you can introduce yourselves, and one of you spell your last name and your address, please, and then, Mr. Chairman, they're all yours.
I'm Fran Siegel, 6 Elmswell Court.
And I'm Frank Siegel, 6 Elmswell Court. All right, so right from the get-go, I know you're probably nervous standing at the podium. So the first thing I'm going to try to program you into is, it's hard to hear in here, and everything has got to be picked up on that mic in front of you. So when you're speaking, or testifying, if you can, as close as you can to that mic, loudly and clearly, and we'll be able to move it along. So with that, I take it, Ms. Siegel, you're going to present.
We'd like to construct a deck in our backyard. We have three steps going down, and as we get older, it's harder to walk down the three steps. And if we're carrying anything, it's hard to hold on and carry food or anything in the back.
Okay. Ms. Siegel, I see that there is a picture of a survey up on the screen.
Yes.
Is that the survey of your house?
Yes, it is.
And then at the very top of the survey, I see something that's highlighted in yellow. Can you tell us what we're looking at?
It's a concrete patio. That's exactly where we want to put the deck, over that concrete patio.
So the patio, the concrete patio is there now?
Yes, it is.
But the deck that you want to build is not there now?
That is correct.
Okay. And so what I see, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that the cement deck, it runs all the way up to the rear property line? Is that correct?
Excuse me? Yes, that's pretty much the rear property line.
And the deck you want to build right on top of the patio to also go all the way right up to that rear property line?
I think it's one foot less, one foot shorter than where the property line is. I think the concrete patio goes out 16 feet to the property line.
I'm looking also, it looks like you submitted some additional photographs. I don't know if, Anthony, if you have them in the file there to show, but at least I received some additional photographs.
I have a picture, easy for you to see.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
The patio is the whole...
Hold on, just wait, wait, here we go.
They got the pictures.
Yeah, that's what I have too. Only we're looking at it sideways, but those are the...
Can I hand you these pictures? Much easier to see. Well...
We also need to have them on the screen, so the folks at home that are zooming in can also see them. All right. Are those the pictures that you have? Are those the...
Yes, the picture at the top represents a concrete deck now, concrete patio now. And the one at the bottom is a picture of another deck in our development. It's going to be looking just like that. And the staircase will be on the deck.
I want to start first with the top picture. That's your house?
Yes.
And that's the concrete pad that runs all the way to your rear property line?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I can ask two questions quickly. Question number one, and this was really to our professionals first, do we have any concern, presuming the board would approve this, or even something less, do we have any concerns over impervious coverage issues? In other words, should they take up the concrete? That's the first question. The second question is really more of a point, is really a reminder to the board. We haven't seen variance requests in the homeowners association in some time. Excuse me, but the board will recall that the board had adopted a policy that is a condition of approval, just for resolution compliance purposes, that the applicant obtain their HOA approval as well. I'm just putting all... Yep. So the first question's really to the professional.
Now, as far as an impervious cover perspective, open decks, what I mean by that is wood frame decks are not considered impervious cover. You have, the impervious cover is the patio that's currently there. So the question I have for the applicant is, are you removing the concrete patio, or are you building the deck on top of the patio?
Building on top of it.
Okay.
They may have to remove to put the footings in for the deck.
Understood. Yeah, there's no increase in impervious cover as a result of that, because the patio is already there.
And there's no concern over drainage or anything?
Not there yet, so...
Okay, sorry.
I want to, I do want to clarify the survey, though. The back of your house, the room to the left in the upper picture, that room is 15 feet, just over 15 feet to your property line from there. How far is the deck coming off the back of that, the back of your house? Because that other picture below does not show the deck 15 feet beyond that back room. So how big is the deck? If you come out the door, how deep is the deck?
Three steps.
No, no, no. How...
What size?
When you come out, when you come out that door, right? When you come out your back door, how far does the deck go towards the rear?
I think it's 15 feet.
Okay, so it's not right up against the property line? That's what I'm getting at.
I think it's one foot shorter.
No, it's, no, it's probably about four feet shorter. So if your deck is only 15 feet, if your deck is only 15 feet deep, correct?
We have the plans. Do you have the size of the deck?
Size of the deck was in the, when we made the request, it's in the...
You're proposing a 15-foot-by-27-foot deck, right? So it's 27 feet, which is along the width, and then away from the house, right? As you...
15 feet.
15.
It's 15 feet. However, it's 15 feet from your bay window, not 15 feet from the back room.
No, it's 15 feet from, not the window. You could see further back, from the...
From the back corner of...
Correct.
Okay. So it's actually bigger than 15 feet?
No, it's 15 from that point out. Not from the window.
Okay. Okay, so then you're about a foot off the property line, because your rear setback is 15 feet. Your house is about a foot inside of that, right? Okay.
Problem is, we haven't been able to use the deck, because she can't walk down the steps. She's got a problem with her ankle. It'll make it easier. There will be no step down. It'll be flat with the door.
And the elevation of the deck is going to be consistent with the top step, like where your stoop is?
Yes.
So it's only going to be...
22 inches.
22 inches above, 22 inches above ground. Okay. From a drainage perspective, the grades are already established such that there's positive drainage off of the patio and surrounding grades, so there's no adverse impact to any adjacent grades or surface elevations.
All right. Maybe this is, it's just not sinking into my head, but I'm...
Full of us.
My focus right now is the top picture, okay? And as I'm looking at the concrete patio, I want to focus on the concrete line to the farthest to the right, all right? Farthest to the right. What, where is the property line in relation to that line?
On the right, we go out another three feet wider.
Does that seem right to you, Evan, in terms of what you're seeing on the survey?
Yes, because the side of the house, we have three feet. You can't see that side, but there's three feet straight out.
No, hold on, hold on. Your survey, your survey, your survey shows the front corner of your house being six feet off the property, or 5.9 feet off the property line where the garage is. The rear is close to 12 feet, if not 10, 10 to 12 feet off the property line.
Yes.
You have a five-foot side yard setback, so your house is a minimum five feet away from your property line.
It's five plus three feet.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. It's close to eight to 10 feet, right? So it's, let's say, eight feet.
Can you just, if you can, just help me with the perspective? As I'm looking at the top photo, and I look at the front portion of the concrete, that first concrete line that faces us, we have grass, and then the concrete. Are we looking from this perspective to the back of their house, or to the side of their house?
So that, on the top picture, is showing the rear of the home, okay? The right side would be a common side yard with the house to the right, and the left side is entirely within their property. But the rear, the part of the concrete closest in perspective in that photo, is the rear lot line.
All right, so stay with that then for a moment. If I understood your analysis of the survey, if we don't touch the concrete at all, and they build their deck maybe a foot in onto that concrete, they would be about a foot off their property line with the deck?
Two.
Two feet off. So that, that concrete portion that I'm seeing is really pretty much right up against the property line?
Yes.
All right, now I've got a better...
And the question I have for the applicant is, that patio, was that was constructed as part of the home originally?
Yes, the builder...
Where the original owners.
Okay.
And that was done by the builder itself.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I need clarification as well. This proposed deck, is it going to shadow the concrete, or extend past the concrete?
It will not pass the concrete. It'll be a one foot in. They will have to break up, I guess, some of it for the footing.
No, I'm not worried about breakup. I'm worried about the structure itself. It's basically, you're going to set that, that deck on top of the concrete that's already there.
Correct.
It will not extend past the concrete that's there presently.
Not going past the concrete.
Will it, but you're also test, you just testified, it's going to be a foot setback on all sides, on all open sides, or just the rear side or the right side?
Just the rear. The sides, we're not going past the sides either.
But you want, so, but ultimately, you will not extend the deck past...
15.
...the concrete pad itself?
Absolutely not.
And that was existing at the time of construction of the home?
Yes.
Through the chair?
I saw a piece of...
Why are they here then? If the...
Because Jeff Puperno wouldn't issue a permit.
Yeah, real lot line. Supposed to be 15 to 25 feet.
Rear yard's part.
But the pad was constructed within that...
But the pad is not the deck, and...
Oh, by different...
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you proposing to do stairs off the back of the deck?
No, the stairs will go to the side. Will not go past that concrete. It'll go on the left side where you can't see. We have, we have another room on the left. That's all grass. That's our property.
Okay, so the stairs are going to come up the side?
To the side of the, right.
What we have now is coming down that gate, that side railing there. It's all...
How do you maintain the back portion of your property, and how does your neighbor maintain it since the...
It's common ground.
Excuse me?
So, and this is, this is the part for the board. This is part of a planned retirement community, right? So all the open spaces, all the green spaces, all the common areas are maintained by the homeowners association. There are virtually zero maintenance on the homeowner's part, other than your flower beds possibly. So, and that's why these lots are so small, right? They were originally built, originally built, and currently still consist of swales between the homes for drainage, and swales along the rear for drainage as well.
Will it, will a deck that they're proposing, even though it may be a foot in, is that going to have any negative impact in terms of upkeep and care of the property, and otherwise impair these swales or anything to that effect?
No, no, because the current, the existing patio is outside of any drainage swales, right? And I think, I think the interesting thing here too is, you have a before and after. You have what it currently looks like, and then what another home of that model, appears to be the same model, what they were permitted and allowed to construct. And that's the bottom picture.
The bottom picture...
Excuse me, Anthony, if you can, can you push that bottom picture up a little bit so we can see it a little better? Please?
There you go.
Thank you.
We will not have the steps coming off that side, because that would be the end of our concrete. The steps will be on the other side, inside.
So as specific to the deck, you're planning on a vinyl deck?
It's a non-composite trest.
Okay.
So we don't have to stain it or anything like that.
With railings?
Yes, exactly that look.
Yes, Mr. Hurley. Have you spoken to your rear yard neighbor about this?
Yes.
They were all notified, and we did speak with the immediate neighbors. Nobody had any objections.
And the one directly behind us is about 70 or 80 feet from us.
Just out of curiosity, how would you feel if your neighbor to your rear built the deck right up to that property line? You'd be, you'd be right next to each other.
He said no problem.
He would build a 70-foot, he would build a 70-foot deck, plus the 20 that he has. He would have to build an 80-foot deck.
Okay.
To come all the way up to the property line.
There's a picture he throws of the house behind us.
So your neighbor has no objection?
No.
And you got, you got approval already from your community?
From the homeowners association, yes.
I have it here, can you...
Through the chair?
Yes.
A follow-up to Mr. Hurley's question. You're referring to the property to the direct rear of you, but as you face your house from the street, the property to the left, no, I'm sorry, to the right side, his property is actually closer to yours property line. That note that I was, have you heard, spoken to that neighbor?
They are so closed in, they have shrubs all around, you can't even see their...
But have you spoken to them?
Yes, they were all notified. Everybody within 200 feet was notified.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Chair, one more follow-up question. You plan on, since it's going to be raised 22 inches, you'll have the lattice work and the skirt to cover it underneath? Will there be access, accessibility?
I'm going to ask them to put it in, just in case a crit gets in there or something.
Thank you.
You know, I've got to admit, I was leading to it a little bit, but Mr. Hurley kind of nailed it down. In terms of the, from the perspective of the property owner directly to your rear, would be, as I'm looking at your, your survey, would be the owner of Block 24. If he chose to do the same thing that you're doing, you could conceivably have a budding concrete pad, almost a budding concrete patio, and, and your proposed deck would be a couple of feet away from each other. Is, I'm just wondering if that's proven under the circumstances, or perhaps...
Mr. Chairman, though, I think their testimony is that that particular, the home is 70, approximately 70 feet back from the property line. So they would have to, don't, don't overtry, don't overtry your case.
Frank.
Thank you for the clarification.
Don't, don't overtry your case.
I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay.
I have a picture if you'd like to see the house in back of us.
Now, counsel, clear that up for me. All right, thank you.
Oh, there's the house in back of us.
Just, Mr. Chairman, before you go to open the public, I just wanted, just for resolution purposes, that, Mr. Hill, the deck as proposed is two feet off the rear property line? One, one and a half, I'm sorry.
So the survey doesn't dimension how far off the property line the patio is. The applicant is asking for a deck to extend 15 feet beyond the rear of their home, correct? Which is entirely within their property. If I had to estimate it based on the survey, it would be one foot off the property line?
It is one. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions of the applicants? No other questions from the board? Professionals, any questions or concerns on the application? Now, is there anything further that you folks would like to add before I open it to the public?
No.
No? All right, then in that case, I close this portion of the meeting, and I now open it to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application? All right. I see no one here. However, I am looking at the screen that Anthony set up for me to see, and I'm seeing 21 attendees, if I'm looking at this right. And Anthony, I'm seeing a hand associated to Eleanor Hanam. Does that mean she wants to be heard?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then let's allow Eleanor Hanum in to hear what Ms. Hanum has to say. Ms. Hanum, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can't see you yet, we're hoping we, oh, there you are. Okay. Yeah, I can see you on my screen, but I don't see you up on the screen. There you are. Okay, Mr. Gertner is going to swear you in, Ms. Hanum.
Ms. Hanum, you raising your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you will present before the board or to the applicant will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Eleanor Hanum, H.A.N.N.U.M., 7 Evergreen Court.
Good evening, Ms. Hanum.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, can you repeat your address? We didn't get it on our end.
7 Evergreen Court.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay.
Ms. Hanum, do you have a question or comment on this application?
Actually, my question was how many residents were part of the meeting? And you had just answered that question before you brought me in. So, if we can avoid doing that, if you could tell us how many residents are in this meeting when we start, it would be great.
Oh, well, I can, well, as part of the process, go ahead, Mr. Hurley.
Yeah, so what, what the board has adopted is they make the announcement when it's open to the public because people go in and out of the meeting. So, the time, the best time to disclose how many folks are participating is right when it's open.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's just that at the last planning board meeting, no one had any idea how many residents or participants were in the meeting. It was never announced.
All right.
So, okay, that was my only question, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, Anthony, I'm back to looking at the screen again and I see that we have 22 attendees, but I do not see any other hands up by any of the other attendees. Do you agree with my observation? All right. In that case, since no one else is seeking to be heard, I close the public portion. And, board members, the application is now ours, any questions?
Through the chair, I have a question. I don't recall hearing any testimony about a hardship.
Well, so, I think they're really asking for a C2 variance, not a C1. I mean, there's a slight medical hardship, but this is more benefit and detriment to the zone plan. And again, to Mr. Hurley's point, not to argue, trying to articulate neutrally, the applicant being pro se, but they do have the approval of the homeowners association and they've indicated that the deck itself will be inside or along an existing patio. So arguably, a deck is a nicer aesthetic, quite frankly. I mean, I'm offering an opinion, I guess. A nicer aesthetic than, than a simple, you know, a simple concrete patio. So, that would be their argument. It's really a C2. Because you're right, they, no direct hardship.
I'm prepared to make a motion to accept this application and for the deck.
I'll second that.
Throw a call first?
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Ms. Camella? Mr. Nigarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Your application's approved, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, have a good night. All right, Green Apple Holdings, you're up. Good evening, Mr. Pfeffer. Mr. Papor will help you out with that. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, turn on behalf of the applicant, Green Apple Holdings LLC. The application this evening, I'm sure the site, the board is very familiar with or may be very familiar with, it's the JR Custom Landscaping and Garden Center, which has a storied past and history within the township. The application this evening is a bifurcated application for a use variance to construct a retail commercial use within the R3 residential zone. The applicant is seeking a mix of approximately a 40,000 square foot retail building, approximately a 5,000 square foot retail building and a third, also about 5,000 square foot retail building with parking for 280 cars. The application but for the use variance, we're only seeking one bulk variance and that'll be for building coverage where 15% is allowed and we're seeking 17.6%. With that being said... Sorry.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Pfeffer, I was distracted momentarily.
No problem. With that being said, at this point, we can swear in Mr. Flannery, who's the engineer of the project and can give the testimony.
Before we swear, I mean, though, Mr. Peters...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I listened to Mr. Pfeffer's opening and I just wanted to make sure we were clear. I thought I heard conflicting information. This is for use variance only, correct?
Correct.
You're asking for an approval for specific buildings in specific location for specific sizes along with the use variance or just the use variance?
We're looking just for the use variance. There was a plan provided and generally, we'll get to the testimony, this is the concept that we would like to come in for and it would be for up to that.
At some point, the board needs to decide whether or not they're going to approve your concept or they're going to approve your use. Needs to be clear, so the record's clear, so that we can address any other things. If the board were to approve a sketch or a layout, it may or may not require waivers and variances from bulk or design standards. So, I want to make sure we're clear that we're here for a use variance.
We are here for a use variance this evening. Mr. Flannery, if we can.
Yes, Mr. Pfeffer.
Mr. Flannery, you raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony, information, comments or any questions directed to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner.
I know you've testified here before, Mr. Flannery, but briefly through the record, would you put your qualifications on the record?
I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, professional land surveyor and registered architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as licensed in a few other states. I was a founding partner in Flannery Webber Hansen, a engineering firm in Toms River back in 1987. That firm has evolved into FWH Associates at this point. I've testified before hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including this board and the Jackson...
The credentials are accepted, Mr. Flannery, thank you. Are you testifying this evening as a planner or an engineer or what capacity specifically?
The testimony tonight is basically planning testimony because we're asking for just the use. So, what I'd like to do is give a general kind of layout of what is behind this application. This was an application that was, the concept was started in 2019. The applicant is a contract purchaser of the subject property and the purchase is subject to getting a use approval from this board as well as public sewer from ultimately the Jackson MUA, which would require a sewer service area amendment from the NJDEP. So, this concept that was started in 2019, initially we had, and probably when we get back to it, we could hopefully get the same interest, interest from Starbucks as one of the tenants of the site. Now, pre-COVID, the concept that we submitted, which I'll go through the exhibit shortly, and I had a lot of input into that concept and I think it made sense. With COVID, we've seen that you need things different. So, we would anticipate that some of the, the building size would probably shrink a little. The, there'd be areas for, hopefully we get a Starbucks where there'd be a drive-through and pickup. So, there'd be certainly tweaks to it. This was an idea that was formulated in 2019, looking at the property, looking at the location and indicating it would be a good location from a, from a standpoint of development of a property in that particular location. We have, we still have a long way to go. Even if the board acts favorably tonight, we need to go back to the state. We need to come back here to the board with fully engineered plans and reports on traffic and drainage to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Through the chair, just, again, I hear the orientation, Mr. Flannery, but to make sure that I'm hearing it correctly, is it your testimony, your request or understanding that should the board act favorably, one of the conditions of approval would be to obtain the, ultimately the MUA approval and the sewer service change such that you would not be back for a, for the site plan portion, for the second part of the bifurcation, until you obtain that approval? Otherwise, you'd be asking for a waiver of that or an amendment to that particular condition?
Well, I, I would anticipate more that the major hurdle that we have to overcome is the sewer service area amendment. So, certainly the applicant would be okay that we would not come back to the board before we got a sewer service area amendment from the DEP. The specifics of the MUA approval, you know, the preliminary, the tentative and the final, that wouldn't necessarily, in my opinion, be needed prior to coming back to the board if we have the sewer service area amendment approved by the NJDEP.
Okay, so, for the board's clarification and for Mr. Flannery's, quite frankly, what I believe is following up on Mr. Peters' point, I'm hopeful I understood it, that is that in general, from a concept perspective, you're talking about 50,000 square feet of retail or commercial space, correct?
That is correct.
And there's an understanding at least that as part of the use variance conditions and affirmative testimony that you're going to be offering is that the 50,000 square feet, you need, you need sewer to service it. Otherwise, you can't put 50,000 square feet on the property.
That is correct.
And that's for the board's justification, at least. That was my reason for asking these follow-up questions. So, I am on the same page and understanding, at least, I appreciate that, thank you.
Through the chair, I have a question. Could there be a situation where they might get state approval but not MUA approval? I mean, I don't know if that's possible, but...
We, we have had discussions with the MUA and the MUA acted very favorably because if you're familiar with the site, we have the Wawa, we have the Speedway that are both on septics at this point. If this application is approved, it would be extending sewer from the mug rack area up to here. It would pick up those other businesses and the MUA was very favorable to this. The MUA has rules. If you follow the rules, you pretty much get the approval, assuming you're in a sewer service area and the applicant would have to follow those rules. So, I don't see a situation where the MUA didn't approve it. But if the board approved something and the MUA did not approve it, it can't be built anyway. This can't be built without sewer. Without sewer, it stays as JR Landscape.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is a 6.5 acre site, as Adam indicated, there's the existing landscape business on it. It's currently in an R3 zone and that area, I'm sure the board is familiar and you can see on exhibit one, which is up there. The residential that was built previously in this area was built on one acre lots. When the township decided to put the R3 in there, it was because there's no public sewer in the area and that pretty much locked this site in that it's either going to stay as JR Landscaping or something else that would need town approval would need to be done. Because nobody's going to remove the JR Landscaping to put a house or maybe two houses in there. It's not really a desirable location for a house in between the church and next to the Speedway. So, we're here for the bifurcated application. We're looking for, it's a D1 variance and we're looking for neighborhood commercial type of uses. Later in the testimony, I will go through what's permitted in the neighborhood commercial zone. The applicant's not married to any specific uses. As I indicated, we thought Starbucks was a good option for the site. I myself live about a mile from here. I would not be coming to Starbucks because I'm not a Starbucks guy. But my daughter and son-in-law live two miles from here and they would love not to have to drive to Hal to go to Starbucks. And my wife would love not to have to drive the kids to Hal to go to Starbucks. So, it's those neighborhood commercial type of uses that we would be thinking about. The, the design concept, we looked at a maximum of 60% impervious cover and certainly if the board were to approve anything, we would certainly limit it to less than the 50,000 square feet that was submitted and less than 60% impervious coverage. There's no intention to come back and surprise the board. The, the uses, we think would be similar to the professional pavilions down the seat, the street and, and again, neighborhood commercial type of uses so that people don't have to drive to Hal or Lakewood to get to these situations. So, I think at this point, if we present the exhibits, A1 is up on the screen. A1 shows the subject property in the middle of it in red. It also indicates the Speedway and the Wawa just below it. I'm sure the board is all familiar with where those are. Those are in the neighborhood commercial zone next to us, also in the R3 zone or the Hope Cathedral Church and the Jackson United Methodist Church. If you look at some of the other uses adjoining us, lot 61 on Bennett Mills Road is a single-family residence. That's one single-family residence that's very impacted by the landscaping business. It will be impacted by this, the retail, but we would be proposing as part of the plan when I get further into it to enhance the buffering in that area. Then you, then you go to the west, you have the Speedway and lots 65 and 66 on Cedar Swamp Road, which are in single ownership. There's a for-sale sign up there, the for-sale sign been there for quite a long time indicating medical or office. It was a residence at one point. It's certainly, again, not a ideal location for a residence. Lot 67, a little further along on Cedar Swamp, again, is another residence, fronting on Cedar Swamp. When I show the next renderings, you'll see that the home that's on there is more than 120 feet from the subject property. So, if we go to, does the board have copies of these exhibits? I brought extra, extra copies if anybody...
Could you bring them out so that folks could? I'm, I'm sure they're on the screen, but... Thank you. They were pre-marked, right? They just, they were pre-marked?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
So, the next one I'd like to talk about is A2, which is an aerial exhibit of the site. Thank you. So, A2 again shows the subject property. There's a red line around it, just, just east of the intersection of East Veterans Highway and then Cedar Swamp. It also shows what was, I mentioned on the tax map exhibit. It shows the Hope Cathedral Church, it shows the Jackson United Methodist Church, it shows the Speedway and the Wawa. Additionally, it shows the houses which I described, the one house on Bennett Mills Road directly next to us and the, the homes along Cedar Swamp. It also shows Evergreen Court to the rear of us. And, and exhibit A2, it, it shows the existing condition of the landscaping business. If we go to A3, which is basically the same as A2, only we've superimposed the proposed site layout. And again, we've added buffers along the entire perimeter. There would be a minimum of a 30-foot buffer along the entire perimeter. To the extent there's existing vegetation, we would supplement it with additional vegetation. All of that would be done by a landscape architect before we came back to the board if the board acted favorably on the use. Moving to A4, A4 is just a, a large blow-up of the existing landscaping business. And, and you can see that along the front, it's clear to the property line. Along the eastern property line, there's a few trees toward the front. There's a pocket of trees in the, in the back, along the church. And the, most of the site is open and disturbed. Going to A5, it's putting the proposed layout in that, in that same box. And you can see to the east where there's the one house, we would be supplementing the buffering along there, supplementing the buffering to the neighboring church. There is buffer and an additional buffer in the back where we'd go toward the Evergreen Court, which on this exhibit, you don't even see them there. The lots are further away. You can see them better on, on the earlier one where it showed it, but... But, and again, we would have a minimum 30-foot buffer all the way around. The ordinance for the neighborhood commercial for a facility of this site requires a 25-foot. We felt that a 30-foot was more appropriate. And again, the layout, I'm expecting, is going to change a little as we spend probably two years designing this and doing market studies and figuring out how it works. And the size of the building, the number of parking, in all probability, would be reduced to provide for a site that has amenities to accommodate what we would be anticipating. And then A6 is a perspective rendering of the site. And again, it's a single-story retail building with two smaller satellite buildings. We're not married to any part of this concept. What we're looking for is a neighborhood commercial center. My thought process on this was that a site of this nature reduces some of the visual impact of a larger site by breaking up the uses a little. And again, a lot of it will be market-driven if the board acts favorably and we get our DEP approval and we're back.
The rendering on A6, is that the scale?
Well, it's a perspective rendering, so the building up front looks bigger. It's, there's really no scale on a perspective rendering. It's if you were in a drone or something, taking a picture, that is what it would look like. But, you know, a more accurate depiction of what would be proposed would be on A5.
A5, okay. Thank you.
So, looking at the reports that were provided by your professionals, going to the traffic report initially, what's pointed out is this is a site that's currently occupied by JR Custom Landscaping. There are, on Page 2, the first comment is with respect to the parking requirements. And my testimony, and certainly would be a condition of the approval, is that the applicant's not going to request any parking variances. The plan that was shown actually had an excess of parking. The intent would be to make sure there's sufficient parking, so that there's no parking problem.
What standard, apologies, Mr. Chairman, so what, you say that, but what standard? Because the R3 zone really doesn't have standards for the particular use.
Yeah, the standards would be more in accordance with the neighborhood commercial zone. If the board acts favorably on this use, we're getting a different use in the R3 zone, the R3 zone, which is only residential. The ordinance requirement for parking is one space for every 200 square feet, and we would provide that or more when we came back to the board. Item 2 talks about the parking stalls and lengths. And again, we would comply with the ordinance standards for a neighborhood commercial site, such that all of the parking criteria, the aisle widths, and other site design features would be in accordance with the Jackson ordinance. Item 3 talks about a traffic impact assessment, which we have not provided with this application. Certainly, if the board acts favorably, we would do a full traffic assessment. This is on a county road. We would need county approval. The county, in all probability, would be requiring the applicant to upgrade intersections and do whatever else impact fees, whatever else is needed, in order for them to not adversely impact the county facilities. Roughly, a site of this nature for peak-hour trips would have 100 trips entering, 100 trips exiting. My testimony would be, and if we come back, we'll have a traffic engineer that would give that testimony, on a neighborhood commercial-type site, the 120 trips isn't necessarily all people that are just coming there. There are people that are on the road anyway, people that might be going somewhere else. So although it sounds like a lot of trips, when you're talking on county roads and in this area, the trips that people have to make anyway, somebody that's going to get, you know, go for one of those services, if they're not available on the JR Landscaping site, they're going to have to drive to somewhere else. Moving on to Evan's report. He indicates we would need an updated survey. And obviously, if the board acts favorably, and we're back here, in my anticipation would be two years, we would have a current survey at that time to make sure that everything fits. The second comment is with respect to the right-of-ways and any dedication that's needed, any improvements that are needed. They would certainly be a part of any site plan approval. The applicant's not looking for any relief, not looking to cut any corners. The applicant wants to put in a first-class facility that fits at this location. Item 5 talks about the parking plan count. And again, we are going to provide parking in accordance with, slight excess in accordance with the ordinance, so that it would be sufficient parking. Item 6 asks about the presence of environmental constraints. And DuBois Environmental reviewed the site. We submitted to the DEP. I had met with the DEP last year about this, changing the sewer service area. I met with the county about changing the sewer service area. First, the MUA, then the county, then the state. Everybody nodded yes, but they said the first thing they need to know is, are you going to be able to build more than two houses? Because if all you can build here is two houses, you don't need sewer, and we don't need to go any further. So we did, at the DEP's request, have DuBois Environmental go out. There are no environmental constraints as part of any sewer service area amendment. The DEP will look at that in great detail, to the extent if there was an environmental issue, it would have to be dealt with, and the size of the facility would be reduced accordingly. And Item 7 talks about improvements at the driveways. And we would provide driveways consistent with the county's requirements for, and the township's requirements for access and egress onto this roadway. The stormwater facility, the kind of the grass area in A6 that's shown there would be there where a stormwater facility would be provided. The new stormwater regs that are coming into effect in March require a lot of different type of treatments to make sure that the small storms are held and recharged. So there would probably be some biogardens. There may be some forest pavement. We would have to comply with the new standards that go into effect in March. The 10 indicates if we're going to be requesting any waivers from township ordinance standards, and the answer to that is a no. I've said it before, and I'll say it a few more times before I get through my testimony, just so it's clear, so the applicant knows, so the public knows, so the board knows. The intention here is to create a facility that everybody would be proud of. Sidewalk, curbing and sidewalk will be provided throughout the whole site. We will provide crosswalks in the parking area. We will provide sidewalks, so that there's pedestrian safety. Item 12 talks about the Jackson Township MUA, and I had met with them. They were very positive. And assuming the board acts favorably, we spend the time with the DEP, which will be an extended time with the executive order in place. There's nothing that's really getting done at the DEP, so that's kind of out of our hands. If this state of emergency goes on for a year and a half, you probably won't see me for three years. We will clearly indicate the buffering when we come back. With respect to the neighborhood commercial zone, a 25-foot buffer is required. We're proposing 30 feet, and it would be a combination of existing vegetation, to the extent that it's usable, along with newly planted vegetation. And Item 14 is with respect to the trash locations. And when we come back with the board, we would have complete details if the board acts favorably on the application. Moving on to the Remington Burnick report. Ernie indicates we are here for D1 use variance. R3 zone does not permit the neighborhood commercial retail use that we're proposing, and that's why we're here this evening. That's all we're anticipating the board acting on. And any of the other issues, we will comply with ordinance standards. The, Ernie lists the required and provided status with respect to the R3 zone of what's shown on the sketch. The one item that's marked as does not conform is maximum building coverage. The R3 zone stipulates a maximum building coverage of 15%. And that's very logical. You have a three-acre lot, you're building a house, you don't need more than 15%. We're asked, we show 17.6% for the 50,000 square feet that we're talking about. My professional opinion is that when you get a use variance in a zone, the bulk standards adjust to the use that you ask for. My professional opinion is that 17.6% makes sense. Obviously, the board will weigh in on that. I think 17.6% gives us a facility that's a very good ratable. It provides a service. I'll go through in my testimony what all the benefits are for. But my testimony is that the 17.6% that we're asking for makes sense, and we would respectfully request that the board grant that. Ernie then has questions. A is about the surrounding land uses. I think I've hit on that. The anticipated commercial and retail uses. They could take a look at the neighborhood commercial zone, which is what we're talking about. And they have some of the ones, you know, that I highlighted, are art, graphic, photo-supply stores, artists or photo studios, barber shop, beauty salon, bookstore, a business office, candy store, a florist shop, a gift shop, household supply store, ice cream store, jewelry store. I had hit liquor store, but I know there's a liquor store on Bennett Mills Road, the one I go to that's very convenient. I don't think we need another one of those, and professional offices. Living in that close in the area, I see the benefits of having these neighborhood commercial sites. The County Line Hardware Store, which is less than a mile from my house, it's so much better than going to the big-box stores. You go in there, you get everything you need. And I think this would provide that type of a service.
Mr. Flannery, if I may, I don't have the list, and I don't know that the board...
Watch, Mr. Flannery. Mr. Fleming actually owns that hardware store.
Mr. Flannery, as to the list that you just read for neighborhood commercial, I don't have the benefit right now of having that complete list in front of me, and I don't know that the board does, the other board members do either. The list that you just read off, is that the entire list?
That's not the entire list. That's about half of them. And, I mean, some of them I didn't think would really fit.
Well, I guess what I'm driving at is, are there any uses within the neighborhood commercial zone that you are excluding for the purpose of the application, where you're not seeking a potential use variance for? Or are you limiting those particular ones that you read?
I got to add something. So Mr. Flannery indicated, and again, I may be reading this incorrectly, but Mr. Flannery indicated Starbucks and perhaps a drive-thru. And I'm looking at number 28, and it says restaurants, semicolon, however. Drive-through restaurants and drive-in restaurants are not permitted.
There goes Mr. Gertner, taking all of my thunder.
But if the board does not like the drive-thru concept, Starbucks would have to be a walk-in, or we'd have to get somebody to...
Mr. Chairman, I don't want the board negotiating uses. It's a use variance application. I'm going to remind the board that they, the applicant's here, and they're making a comparison to the NC zone. This board doesn't have jurisdiction to rezone this property for NC. So let's just stay with the idea that we're using the NC zone as a comparison. If the applicant wants to ask for this property to be zoned NC, he needs to leave here and petition the governing body. I just want that to be perfectly clear on the record, so that there's no misunderstanding about what the board's trying to do this evening.
Well, you're going to have to clarify something for me then, Mr. Peters, just so that I understand this better conceptually. If they're applying for a use variance and using the construct of a neighborhood commercial uses, then it could be any use as permitted in the neighborhood commercial...
No. Mr. Flannery just listed a bunch of uses that appear to be permitted in the NC zone. The application, to the best of my knowledge, was for retail. That's what they started off the conversation with, retail. Plans say retail. So at some point, we'll have a conversation with Mr. Flannery's. Direct presentation is done, because the NC zone permits professional office space. I don't think that's retail. So Mr. Flannery was going through what they're proposing to do, and that could become a comprehensive list. My concern is that the NC zone has 30, has 40 permitted uses and five conditional uses. And so we're going to go through them and say, well, which of these do you perceive to be retail?
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
And, Mr. Peters, would you like to do that? Should I do that now, or...
Brian, it's your case. At some point, you guys have to tell us what you're trying to do, and you need to do it so that you're not asking us to rezone the property.
What?
Close the loop on the drive-thru?
Thank you.
To the extent that Mr. Gertner indicated that within the permitted uses, there's an, in the NC zone, within the permitted uses in the NC zone, there's a prohibition on drive-through restaurants. Again, we're not using the NC zone specifically. If they come in and say, we're going to, the biggest drive-thru we're going to have is 5,000 square feet, and it's going to be limited to something. We permit drive-through restaurants in the highway commercial zone. So if you want to drive through McDonald's, you go over on County Line Road. If you want a Dunkin' Donuts, same thing. Starbucks, again, I think the board, in granting a use variance and utilizing the NC zone as a guide for the uses that they're approving this evening, could consider that. We need to be fairly specific, so that we don't put ourselves in a position where someone can take an appeal because we rezone this property. They're asking for a use variance.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Mr. Flannery, back to you.
All right. So the use that we're asking for is retail commercial. And in the concept of the plan that was submitted, it's small retail uses, a combination of retail uses. I think it would make sense to go through the neighborhood commercial. And maybe, I'll just limit it to the ones that I foresee. And if, in the future, there's a use that didn't fit into the boxes that I gave, we would have to come back to the board and ask for use for that particular box. But we'd be happy to take, if the board would act favorably, on retail commercial uses. And I think an artist's photo studio, which is number four in neighborhood commercials, is something that I could envision there. Number seven, under the same section, 244-56, the neighborhood commercial zone, a barber shop or beauty air salon. Number eight is a bookstore. Number eight is a bookstore. Number nine is a business office. Yeah, number six was a bank and financial institution. Number 10 is a candy store. Number 12, a convenience store. 13 delicatessen. 17 florist shop. 18 gift shop. 20 household supply store. 21 ice cream store. 22 jewelry store. 23 liquor store. I think if, if we were within those confines, with the understanding that if, three years from now, there's something that makes more sense, we come back to the board, present it to the board. If the board thinks it makes sense, then it moves forward. Otherwise, I, I think, within those confines, we could present a project that if everybody would think was appropriate for the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard for a minute? May I be heard for a moment? Just to be fair to the applicant here, and the people who may be interested in the application, I think Mr. Peters hit it, hit the nail right on the head. To me, it sounds like this is an application for rezoning, which we don't have the authority to do. In order to be fair to this applicant, if, if, if the applicant intends to proceed on the basis on what you just mentioned, I'd be inclined to vote no, quite frankly. Because what they're asking for is change the R3 to a, to a neighborhood commercial zone. I would be against the bifurcation of this application. I'd be against the bifurcation for this reason. That the vote that's required, obviously, for a, a D1 variance is a supermajority, requires five of the seven votes, regardless of how many people are present, board members. When they come back for the, for the, for the site plan, it doesn't require five, it requires a majority of the quorum that's present. I forget where that is, 78, 79 in the statute, somewhere in there. And the problem with that, with bifurcation, is it gets, it requires the applicant, which I think is unfair to the applicant, requires the applicant, the applicant to prove the negative criteria for use variance, and then prove the negative criteria for C variance, which makes them require that proof twice. I also am firmly a believer that there are no C variances here. They're, they're subsumed into your D variance. Very, an example I like to use is simply this. You want to build a gas station, a residential zone. You don't. I'm just using that as an example. You're not going to use residential bulk standards for the gas station. It has, even the parking spaces doesn't apply. The setbacks don't apply. The, the intensity of the uses don't imply. Traffic becomes a totally different circumstance. I haven't heard anything from the applicant yet as what the specific uses are. So I, I would be inclined to reject the bifurcation approach to this application because of the negative criteria that's involved here. We don't know what the uses are, so we don't, I don't know what the parking is going to be required. I don't know what the traffic impact is going to be. And that's going to affect the negative criteria for your, for your application, both on what you call the Cs, but also on the D1. But the problem with, with that is that we shouldn't be giving away D1 variances very easily. And you're coming in, you say, we're gonna use a, we want to use variance for all these potential uses, but I don't know what the uses are. So to be fair to you and fair to the public, continue along these lines. I don't know how the other board members feel. Well, I personally would have to vote no, for the reasons I just stated. It's an insufficient application. It's not the type of application that should be bifurcated, especially with the, the, the intensity of the uses that are proposed. You can't come in and say, we, we'll use whatever uses you like in the NC zone. No. D1 says, we want a, a variance for a use that's not permitted, and here's my use. Now, it could be retail stores, you know, things, I don't have to, I don't have to be told whether it's gonna be a dry cleaner, or, you know, fast, or just a convenience store, something of that nature. But they're retail uses. But you're listing, I mean, have you made an application? Have you thought about making an application to the governing body for rezoning?
I had conversations with the governing body early on about rezoning, and they said this is a unique piece of property. They didn't feel rezoning was appropriate. The applicant has a hardship here in that nothing makes sense without sewer. We can't get the sewer with-
I understand, but I don't know that, I wasn't talking about rezoning a specific piece of property. Obviously, it's gonna be spot zoning. I would never encourage that.
Right.
But this entire area around that intersection could be rezoned. You know, you have all these various uses in there. My question is, have you, have you made an application? Not asked, have you made an application for rezoning?
I, I did not make a formal application for rezoning because the advice I got was that they just had the master plan reexamination where they made a decision not to do rezonings.
I only just want to caution you, I'm speaking for myself. You want to proceed, that's fine. But what I'm hearing is, essentially, as Mr. Peters said, you're asking for rezoning here. That's exactly what you're asking for on this piece of property. If you're gonna ask for a use variance, tell me what the uses are. So I can, I as a, as a, as a board member, can determine what the impacts are going to be for the negative criteria. I can't even do that. I don't know what the uses are. I don't know what the traffic impact is going to be. I don't know what kind of parking you're proposed. You can't come in and say, give me, give me a use. You can, but I don't know if you'll get it. You can't come in and say, give me a use variance, we want to use the NC zoning criteria, and say, that's the number of parking spaces we need. With the use variance, I'd rather see you say, you know what, we need more spaces than the NC, or we may, we may need less spaces than the NC. It's not a C variance. It's subsumed into your D anyway. So I, I'm just, you know, quite frankly, I feel like I'm, my time is being wasted.
Well, if, if the board feels it, it would be an advantage for the applicant to make a formal request to the governing body for rezoning before we come back, the applicant would do that. That'll add more time to it. I don't anticipate it would be done. My suggestion is we-
I just asked that question. I'm not suggesting you do that at all. Recognize the problems with, with the spot zoning issues, things of that nature. Trust me, I recognize that. My only point here is that this is not an appropriate application for bifurcation.
Well, the application was submitted for retail commercial. Stores are gonna sell things. The, the question was asked, and, and I went through a list. If we could strike that and start over again, we're, we're just looking for retail stores. And retail stores typically require one parking space for every 200 square feet. And, and the app, the plan as submitted provided more parking than one per 200 square feet. And, and the applicant is agreeing that if the size of the facility gets reduced, which I anticipate it will, when the, we get into the design, that the parking will meet at least one per 200 square feet, with respect to setbacks, because I, I hear what you're saying about the C variances. We, we would certainly limit the, the front setback to 60 feet, the rear setback to 30 feet, and sides of 20 each with a total of 50. So that, that would give the board an understanding of where it is. We, we submitted a plan. We would represent that the, the buildings would not get any closer to the property lines than shown on that plan. That, that plan would be a maximum of what we could accomplish. And the uses would be retail commercial. Retail commercial being stores that, small stores that sell, sell products.
Mr. Peters?
So is office off the table now?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I didn't know if Mr. Flannery was done. He sort of got to a point, and then we jumped on.
No, I, I was in your report with the anticipated uses. Architectural plans, we've, we've submitted a rendering. Obviously, will, if the board acts favorably, when we, when we finally get back here, we would have full architectural plans, and we'd have actually, actual tenants at the time. So we give, give the board the information. Item E is with respect to parking, and based on one parking space for 200 square feet, we indicated on the plan that 250 parking are required, and 280 were, were provided on the sketch. The G indicates we should, we should do soil testing, and the existing site is pretty open. It's a typical site. The, we had an environmental consultant, the voice environmental, go out. They did borings to indicate there's no wetlands and no groundwater problem. The, the H is respect, with respect to deliveries. The sketch indicates a driveway aisle behind the building where deliveries would take place. There would be an identification sign that would, would comply with the ordinance. We will provide a, a letter from the DEP indicating that there are no wetlands or environmental issues on site. L with respect to the sewer and water. We will make any approval by the board subject to getting public sewer and public water. And certainly will comply with the ordinance requirements with respect to, to landscaping and buffering and lighting. And, and there will be private pickup of the trash and recyclables for all of the sites. So now, now we get into the justification for this, for the D variance that's being requested. And the, typically, the justification for a D variance needs to be that there's a, is a hardship, there's a, it's an inherently beneficial use, or it enhances the public good. What I'd like to do is read some of the Jackson Township master plan. And, and first of all, under the land use section, I, I think it's important to point out on LU-16, under rural residential planning districts, the intent of the rural residential planning district, it was to enjoy low-density residential on large tracts in the unsued portion of Jackson Township. So that is how this property went from one acre residential to three acre residential, it was based on the sewer. And it, it indicates on page LU-17, it's further recommended that alternative treatment units be permitted as options where nitrate dilution requirements, specifically a larger site, or where drainage basins already had more septic systems than permitted by the regional nitrate dilution analysis. So in this area, where a lot of the area is on one acre lots, which is more intense than that, it would be a public benefit to bring the sewer in so that there, there's no further nitrate dilution. The executive summary on page ES7 indicates that the existing zoning, the build-out analysis for, for non-residential development, projected that a maximum of 49 million square feet of commercial and 9.7 million square feet of industrial development could be constructed in the township under the current regulations. So, the, as I go further on in the master plan reexamination, you're gonna see that the, the non-residential development in town is on a low side in order to balance. And it's my opinion that by taking a site that's a already disturbed, already being used in a non-residential fashion, and, and making it into a better ratable, would be a benefit. The, under the goals and objectives, it indicates a direct growth into areas suited for land development, and away from areas appropriate for resource protection. As I indicated, we did have an environmental scientist look at this site. There are no environmental areas to be protected. And it's my testimony that based on the location of this between the church and next to the Speedway, with an existing landscape business there, that, that this is an appropriate location for that. The 2019 reexamination of the master plan provided a, in figure one, population and housing changes. And you can see that from 2000 to 2017, the housing went from 14,000 to 21,000. But figure two indicates the percentage of the area that's used for each of the land uses. The residential land use is 25.4%, as opposed to the commercial, that's 2.59%. So, and my professional opinion is that, you know, that commercial land use number is very low. And by making a, a commercial site here that fits in, and its impact on the adjoining is actually reduced by the buffers and amenities that would be provided. The same reexamination report on page 14 starts with the master plan recommendations, and, and E of that says, encourage commercial development. Commercial zoning districts in the township in particular, the areas in the highway commercial district, are significantly underdeveloped and underutilized. The township prioritized the areas it wants commercial development, and identify and consider strategies to encourage development in these areas. Now, this is, this particular site, because it's an existing site that was already developed in a non-residential fashion, is not the kind of a site that the township would look at and say, we, you know, we would direct it there. But I, I think it's appropriate for the zoning board to look at that. And if I provide the appropriate justifications, I think this is an appropriate place to encourage good, clean, commercial development. Continuing to page 15, under the development regulations, on, under F, again, it talks about commercial development, and then the commercial development along county line. And, and it indicates the township should consider permitting additional revenue neutral uses, such as senior houses and apartments within the HC zone. Certainly, you can read from these provisions that the township is trying to encourage that good, clean, commercial development. And, and it's my opinion that this is an appropriate location to do that. If we look at the municipal land use law, NJSA 40,55D2, under the purpose of the act, A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. My testimony is that this does that, because it takes a, an existing non-residential property in a residential zone and redevelops it in a fashion that provides additional buffering, and it provides the public benefits of extending the public sewer. G, under the same purposes of the act, is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses. And, and, and this is providing sufficient space for that retail commercial use that is needed. For a D variance, it needs to be in particular cases and for special reasons. And, and the special reason is, is this property is particularly suited for that type of use. It adjoins a neighborhood commercial zone. The Speedway and the Wawa are in the neighborhood commercial. This property adjoins it, it's sandwiched in between those uses and the church. It's on a road that's not conducive to residential development. And I, I think if, if it had a house on it, it would be a more difficult argument to indicate why the board should rezone, or not rezone it, but to approve a D variance to allow a use that's not residential on it. But since it already has that use, and, and that's a use that was approved by this board years ago, when they approved the landscaping business, at that point, a case was brought to the board to say, it's not suitable for residential at that location because of the uses that are adjoining it. adjoining it, because of the traffic on the road. And the board, I think appropriately, granted the use variance to JR Landscaping. And my opinion is that at this point, because JR Landscaping is there, because of all the factors that entered into the board's decision to approve JR Landscaping, they're more so appropriate today. And today, we're going to be extending public sewer to that area. We're going to be picking up two commercial businesses that currently are on septic systems. And we're going to be providing public sewer in the area so that any further development of this site is not done on a septic system. So we need to also show the positive and negative criteria. Certainly, it's my opinion that the variance can relief can be granted without any substantial detriment to public good and will not substantially impair the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I did read from the master plan reexamination report, I think it was full of items that indicate that the town is looking for good, clean, commercial ratables. They're looking to balance. They don't want residential development that overpowers the the ratables and the and the commercial and industrial uses that are there. With respect to the negative criteria, with the effect on the neighbors, I think Exhibit A2 clearly depicts the the impact on the neighbors. We have Speedway next to us, which certainly those will be compatible uses. The one house that's next to us, he's already living next to JR Landscaping. He's already impacted by that site. And I don't want to disparage that site. I bought gravel and sand from from the site, and if he's not there anymore, it, you know, it's it's something that I'd have to drive further for that. But his operation is more open, it's more noisy, and it's more impact on that one house than this commercial site would be. Additionally, we're going to be providing that 30-foot buffer that would be substantially landscaped. I think if you can continue around the perimeter, when we get to Cedar Swamp Road, the properties that are for sale there, they're intending to sell them for a non-residential use. The house that's there is 120 feet away from us. And again, it's a house that's on a very busy roadway. He's getting more buffer with our proposal than he has now. When you go to Evergreen Court, you can see it, the back corner of our property touches one of the lots on Evergreen Court. The rest of it is wooded. We would have a 30-foot dedicated buffer. So you really come down to what would be the negative impact, and you would look at maybe traffic. But from aesthetics, from buffering, I think it's clearly a benefit to the neighbors. When you look at traffic, I think for these type of uses, you're really not generating additional traffic. And this applicant is going to pay to the into the county's impact fees. They're going to do all the improvements that the county requires. And then the additional benefit that they're going to provide is that public sewer. So, you know, based on on that information, it's certainly my testimony that the variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to public good and will not substantially impair the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and that this site is particularly suited for the retail commercial use based on the its location on a major collector road and its location in between the other uses. And that's my testimony.
Is there any additional testimony, Mr. Peffer?
That's our only witness. We'll come later.
All right. Mr. Peffer, I'm curious to know if if there are any overtures made to the to the one neighbor, the one house on Bennett Mills Road that sits between this this lot and the church in terms of seeing if he's if he's willing to sell the property, just some considering his impact, whether or not there've been any overtures to him to buy the property.
I did notice, two years ago when I started on this, he had a for-sale sign out in front of his property. As far as I know, the applicant has not reached out to him. I think the applicant probably would reach out to him if the board acted favorably. But the applicant's got a long road to go. He needs to, at first, the major thing is getting the sewer service area changed, which he can't do without some indication that the Jackson Township is going to permit something other than a single-family residential on the lot.
Professionals, I guess I would like to jump into the professionals. Mr. Miskovich, I think they commented first on your report, so maintain the same order.
Then going directly through the report, I just want to comment on something Mr. Flannery said. He said that there is not going to generate additional traffic. And that's not entirely true. I don't agree with that statement. There is a percentage of traffic that is already on the roadway that would be coming through here, but that's probably in the order of magnitude of maybe 25, 30%. So a lot of this is going to be new traffic, or a good portion of it will be. But countering that, the driveways are going to see 100% of all the traffic movements. So there's going to be an impact at the driveways. I didn't hear any testimony as far as what kind of volumes are generated by the existing facility, but you did mention about 200 peak hour trips from this proposed facility.
Yes.
All right. If I consider this as a shopping center, I may see 200 to 300 more traffic movements during that time period. But I'm leading into the fact, how do we evaluate? How does the board consider what that impact is on the area of roadways and whether this site really fits into that traffic pattern? And can that traffic be mitigated? And in your testimony, I believe you stated that the zoning board granted the approval for the landscaping business due to the traffic volumes on the area of roadways. They thought it was a less traffic impact use. So how do you counter that if we're going to have 200 to 300 times more traffic?
Well, my my statement was that when they granted that, it's because it wasn't a property suitable for residential development. It was less than desirable for residential development. And it was between the church and the and the gas station on the corner. It was a gas station at the time. So, you know, that was the the logic. Also, it's the Bennett Mills Road is a very heavily trafficked road, which for a residential development, residentially developed property, especially families, it would be undesirable. So obviously, two single-family homes are going to generate less traffic than anything additional that we put on the property. But since it is a county major collector road, the applicant would need to do traffic improvements to satisfy the county that any impacts are being mitigated.
But at this point, by the same token, following that reasoning, the landscape business there is a relatively low intensive use. And this proposed use is more traffic intensive compared to the current use. You would agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. The problem, or I shouldn't say it's a problem. One thing is, you do have to get county approval, and you're going to have to mitigate whatever traffic impacts you is resulting from this thing. But isn't it under a use variance portion to show what that you're addressing some of these negative impacts, that you can mitigate traffic and what those improvements may be, at least order of magnitude, rather than waiting for the use to be approved and then have to flush all these details out at site plan? Is there any order of magnitude that you can give the board as far as what may have to be done to mitigate this?
Typically, what would need to be done would be intersection improvements. And in order to determine the intersection improvements, we'd need to do traffic counts. And we're talking about doing traffic counts where we would have done them in 2019 for a project that's not going to move to a full design stage until probably 2022. And the applicant, if if the board felt that the testimony needed supplementing by providing a traffic study, the applicant would certainly carry the the application and get a traffic report and do the counts and address those issues.
Well, I think that's the decision for the board because the ordinance, as I read it, requires it for a primary site plan and subdivision. It doesn't say you provide it at the use variance stage, which when you think about it, at a use variance stage, it's important to know what your impacts might be. So you're comparing this use to what could be there. And we heard neighborhood commercial uses, we've had other type of uses, and we have an order of magnitude of how much more traffic.
Mr. Miskovich, yeah, stay with that because I think I may have skipped a B. I get that, and Mr. Hurley, I think was touching on this as well, hard to evaluate when we don't know what the specific uses are going to be. And if I'm hearing you right, until we know what the specific uses are going to be, we don't know what the real traffic impact is going to be. And in order to do it, in order to know that, we have to do a traffic impact study. But then it seems that we have a COVID overlay that prevents the traffic impact study. Am I missing something here? How do we how do we resolve that problem?
Well, from just from, I'm not getting into the planning, as Ernie will talk about that, but from a traffic perspective, if we consider this a shopping center, shopping center under ITE, the definition of traffic, could have various uses within that retail use. And some of those that Mr. Flannery indicated that are permitted in neighborhood commercial could fit into a larger retail building. So we don't take them individually, but we look at it in totality. So from a traffic perspective, we use something to the higher order, shopping center, and that's all encompassing to come up with the impacts. But to put this in somewhat perspective, the application that was recently approved by this board for town center, where we had the use variances, and that was for an additional retail of the order of 30, 35,000 square feet, we're 50,000 square feet, they did a full traffic impact study and gave the board what would have to be done in order to offset any negative impacts from their traffic. Here are the testimony as well. If we get the use, then we'll pull that report and go through the county and say, here's what needs to get done. So it's not like the board's comparing apples and apples. So, you know, we don't know what the full extent would be. Obviously, when the roadway has a higher traffic volumes, the study would at least give the board a confidence level as far as what those impacts are and what may have to be done. So you can make a value judgment whether the issues from a traffic perspective makes sense. I'm not talking planning and just the traffic numbers.
Anything further on that point? I know I want to talk to my engineer and get my engineer's comments. All right, Mr. Hill?
Okay. No, and I want to piggyback on what Frank had said. I think I think this board has to look at this, a use variance application, just as they've looked at the various use variance applications for similar uses or for similar requests over the last few years. You know, this application has a concept plan, it has some pretty renderings, but it doesn't have the substance submitted to the board that we've seen with other applications. It does not, at least at a minimum, have a traffic impact statement, not a full traffic study, but a traffic impact statement to give the board an idea of what to expect from a traffic perspective and compare that to what we see or compare now to what we expect in the future. We do not have an environmental impact statement. The applicant indicated that a firm went out to the site and didn't see anything environmental constraint-wise, but we don't have that in our documentation. We don't have any preliminary data regarding the onsite soils to even accommodate a stormwater management system. We don't know how much vegetation is proposed to be cleared. We don't know how much new impervious cover is proposed at this point. We may have we may have too much parking. You know, these are all things that, look, I can understand the idea of wanting to just go for use to then get the comfort level to spend a lot of money on site plan. But you have to put you have to put you have to back up your 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 concept and renderings with some substance. And this, sorry, but the information submitted with this application is not consistent with that type of information that we're accustomed to seeing on similar type of use variance applications. They've done more homework to prove to the board that they've done more homework.
Thank you. Mr. Flannery, any comment in return, or Mr. Peffer?
I think we'll wait for all the professionals and we'll comment. That's okay with the board.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I get to jumping around and I confuse anyone, please just stop me. As it relates to Mr. Flannery's planning testimony, generally, I didn't take exception to the proofs he put on the record. There were two comments I thought I heard.
Mr. Peters, I'm losing you a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Not normal for me to be quiet. So I apologize if I heard anyone's eardrums the rest of the evening. I didn't take any exception to Mr. Flannery's direct testimony as it related to the planning issues, except for two statements I thought he said. And if he if I misunderstood them, we'll go back to them. One was that someone's got a piece of property out on Cedar Swamp Road that they're going to sell as non-residential. There's not a piece of non-residential property on Cedar Swamp Road until you get up past Freehold Road or Jackson Mills Road closer to Glories. So they're all residential zone properties in that neck of the woods. As it relates to this site not being developable for two single-family lots, please remember that the financial implication is not an issue that the board should take into consideration. But as it relates to the number of lots that this site could generate, I believe it's a little over six acres. So I'd like to, if the board members have A1, that packet that was handed out, and you start at the the site, just above the site is Evergreen Court, and to the right of that is Yon Drive, and to the right of that is Rutherford Court, and to the right of that is Terry Court, and then across the street is Morning Star Lane. Then as you head back towards the Wawa is Sharice Court, Mills Lane, and Honeysuckle Lane. So within 2,000 feet, half a mile of the site along Bennett Mills Road, there's eight residential projects consisting of over 100 lots that are generally one acre in size. So while I'm not proffering a use variance or a density variance, if the applicant came in and said, I wanted to build six one-acre lots on this site, there's a decent chance he'd make some hay with the idea that there's eight residential projects within half a mile that have 100 one-acre lots on them. In fairness to the the process, I will say that at the intersection of two county roads, especially ones that have a traffic light, we often have an issue with what we refer to as transitional zoning. So normally, the four corners of the intersection normally have something that's non-residential, non-single-family residential. And then the question is, how far from the traffic light or the signalized intersection is a reasonable non-residential distance from a zoning perspective? In this case, the town's looked at this a couple of times. The northwest quadrant of the intersection, which would be to the left of the Speedway, is a wetlands area that's owned by the state, I believe. Diagonally across from the Speedway is a property that's undeveloped behind Switlick and the Jackson Memorial High School property. Obviously, the Speedway's on the northeast corner and the Wawa's on the southeast corner. But the only non-residential zoned sites are the Wawa and the Speedway. So it's obvious that from a planning perspective, when you have the intersection of two county roads that over time and because of development patterns in the town have been developed, now we have a traffic light there, it's not uncommon to see some form of transitional zoning. So to the extent that a non-residential use would be a reasonable transitional zone, I don't think we can shy away from that argument. Whether or not what's being proposed before you is appropriate is why you good folks make the big bucks. Getting back to some of the details or nuts and bolts items, we talked a little bit about drive-throughs. So generally, in neighborhood commercial zones, we don't have drive-throughs. They're normally on highways in the HC zone. But certainly to the extent that that ordinance was created or the difference But certainly to the extent that that ordinance was created, or the differentiation between the highway commercial and neighborhood commercial zone limiting drive-through restaurants, we have different types of uses. You might think that 20 years ago, a drive-through restaurant was a McDonald's. So now we get to what's a Starbucks with a drive-through, what's a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through, are those really restaurants? And to the extent that the applicant wanted to include those, we would simply have to make a determination that a standalone retail center with a drive-through is part of this use variance. I again caution the board about not talking about the NC zone, because the NC zone has 40 permitted uses and a number of conditional uses. And the conditional uses really aren't retail or commercial. But the applicant has indicated they've limited the use to retail and commercial, they've taken out the office use. From a building perspective, I know we're at use, but I, I need to make this, this statement or comment. A significant portion of the larger building is 100 feet wide. And while I'm not an architect and I don't manage or lease retail properties, I go to the store a lot. And retail buildings aren't 100 feet deep. Office buildings are 100 feet deep. Retail buildings aren't. I'm concerned that we're going to build something that isn't marketable. And it's going to lead us to having a hallway in the building and then units that face, I guess it would be the east, towards the residential or church property, where we have a loading zone and a drive aisle. And so I would, the comment I would make to the applicant is that, you know, do you really think you can lease 100-foot-deep retail and commercial space? We would want, when the applicant comes back, for them to indicate whether or not this is a one- or two-story building. Again, I, I think the, the perspective rendering A6, when you looked at the large building, I guess the front of the large building, it almost looked like a two-story office building. It certainly looked like there was an entrance in the, the side of the building. So again, I think we need to have just a little more specificity so the board understands what they're approving. You know, a retailer commercial building is often front-loaded. Customers come in the front door, the employees come in the back door, so to speak. Mr. Flannery had indicated that bulk standards are often adjusted to the zone that's being requested. I like Mr. Hurley's comment that often the bulk standards are subsumed within the use variance. And we had noted in our report dated April 28th of 2020 on page three, as it related to maximum pervious coverage. And when we talk about residential projects and we want to discuss how intense the project is, we talk about residential density. When you have a non-residential project, like a site plan for commercial, retail, or office, the intensity of the project is often governed by either building coverage or impervious coverage. So in this particular case, the Jackson Township Neighborhood Commercial Zone allows for 60% impervious coverage, and the Jackson Township Highway Commercial Zone allows for 75% impervious coverage. So again, I think we need to sort of have an understanding of where we're going in terms of the site's intensity as we proceed with the use variance application. And lastly, with regards to buffers, our ordinance talks about buffer requirements based upon building area. And while I take no exception to the plan that was submitted, we require a 10-foot buffer for building sizes under 15,000 square feet. We require a 25-foot buffer for buildings from 15,000 to 50,000 square feet, and we require a 35-foot buffer for buildings over 50,000 square feet. The sketch before us shows 49,945 square feet, and I believe Mr. Flannery indicated a 30-foot setback, but I don't know if that was meant to be a 30-foot buffer. So again, is, because this property is the R3 zone and all of the uses, all of the zoning around it is R3, if this application came in for a non-residential application, perimeter buffers would be required of at least 25 feet. But because it's a use variance, if we want to reconcile the impacts that the site may have, we may choose in the areas where the adjacent properties are already developed to inquire about a larger buffer between the proposed use and the existing uses. And I think I'll stop now. Thank you.
Mr. Peters? Mr. Pfeffer, it would appear that there's significant additional information that might be helpful. If you are so inclined to go in that direction, I would love to hear that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. After hearing from, from the board's professionals and a few of the board members, we understand there's more information that the board would like to see and that we would like to provide to give the best application possible. So I am going to request that we carry, so we at least at a minimum, give traffic impact statement and/or a full traffic report, as well as provide for some of these additional answers. I just want to make one other comment. In my 15 years, or approximately 15 years of doing a land use, I know boards don't like to see bifurcated applications. I understand that, and I'd say 50 to 75% of the times, the board say, why are we doing this, come back in for the site plan? And I'll tell you, my normal answer is, well, it's not financially really feasible for us to go through the whole design project and come in if we don't even know if we have the use. This application is very different. I just ask that the board, when we come back, keep that in mind. As, as Mr. Flannery indicated, if we don't get into the sewer service area, which we've already met with the DEP and the Jackson MUA, and they've all indicated, if you're not in the sewer service area and if you don't have a commercial use, we're not even going to consider it. So I, I would just ask that you keep that in mind, that it's a little bit different than your normal bifurcated application. But with that said, we're going to come back, we're going to give a lot more answers. I think this was a good, a good hearings, we got good feedback. I do know the board has recommended going forward that there'd be a lot more of the technical review meetings prior to the board. I think this, maybe this application would have been helpful with it. I am mindful in all my applications down, speaking with my engineers and my applicants, that we have those meetings. So when we get a little more information, I'll speak with Mr. Flannery and the applicant to see, maybe we might even have one of those technical review hearings before we come back before the board. One other comment I would just, I, from previous that indicated there were approximately 21 people here, and I don't, I always know that when we cut someone short, we always get told, oh, they're carrying, they're going to come back. I don't know if the board has, has no objection to it, that maybe we open up just to hear some more feedback so that when we do come back, we maybe can address some of those comments. I'm assuming that all 21 are in favor of us, so maybe if we hear some of their comments, we might be able to address some of that and save some time later on. I would, I would just make that request.
We agree with you in that regard, Mr. Pfeffer. Right now, there are 30 attendees by what I can see here, and we will entertain what they have to say. But it's nine o'clock, and before we start the public session, I would like to let the board take a brief break so we can, you know, go to the bathroom, do those, do those kinds of things. So it's nine, it's 9:03 PM right now. We'd like to be back at 9:15, so we come back on the record at 9:15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Thank you. To go back on the record, it is now 9:15. I think we have everybody here. And we are now going to open the session to the public. I'm looking at the screen, and I'm seeing 26 members of the public, and I see two hands up. I see an Eleanor Hannon and a Joseph Rashudi. Is that what you have, too, Anthony? All right. Members of the public, as you've heard, I'm sure you've been paying attention, this application is, is just partially now been submitted. They will be back again. We would appreciate that you follow the general rules of up to five minutes per person. And with that, I will open, open this up. Eleanor Hannon, you had your hand up first, and therefore, Eleanor, if you are there, would you kindly come on? Oh, Ms. Hannon, there you are.
Hi, how are you?
All right, Ms. Hannon, you're going to be placed on the road for Mr. Gertner, and we'll move forward.
Yep, Mr., yeah, there we go.
There you are.
Thank you. Ms. Hannon, you're raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the information, testimony, questions, or comments you're about to present to the board and/or the applicant shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly again, I know you swore in a previous manner, but your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Eleanor Hannon, 7 Evergreen Court.
Good evening, Ms. Hannon. Thank you for coming on. Do you have any questions or comments of the applicant for what you have heard this evening?
I, I do. So I am going to correct Mr. Pfeffer and Mr. Flannery. For the record, the history of the Land, JR Landscaping property was a residence. It actually was two residents that were enjoined into one lot. People did live there. So to make the assumption, or the accusation, that it was always this massive project, it was not. It's a residential piece of property in R3 zone that went in 1999 for a variance to sell flowers and trees and garden-related products. None of the residents had an issue with that, because selling flowers is a far different thing than what this project intends. So just so that you know, people lived there. When the comments were made along Cedar Swamp Road, I highly take offense to these homes and these residents who do live there. It is not your position to make the assumption for the one lot that is right next to the Speedway on Cedar Swamp Road as to what the intent is, because people do still live there. During this application, there was absolutely no mention of any of the residents who lived directly across the street. And I just want to make this note, that 37 Bennett's Mills Road, you did not notice. Instead, you sent their notice to her mother's house, who lives in New Egypt. She did not receive the notice for a very long time. And just to make the facts straight, this will be a spot zoning issue. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Pfeffer, any response at this time to Ms. Hannon? No? Thank you, Ms. Hannon.
Oh, wait, one more thing. I forgot. One more thing. The proposed square footage of this project is half the size of ShopRite. And I'm not saying ShopRite in Jackson. It is ShopRite in Howell. So if you imagine the size of ShopRite in Howell, and many people shop there, you can imagine the size of the capacity of what's going to be on this property, in our backyards and our front yards. Also, one more thing, a traffic study will not suffice at this time during COVID. The high school kids are not driving. The buses are not running at capacity for Switlick School and the high school. So no traffic study would be valid. And I just want to put on the record that all of us, most of us, in this entire general area, just before this application hit, are heavily being solicited by realtors. I got one, as did the residents on Maxim, Mills Lane, Yon, and Rutherford, and all the other streets. So I find this very questionable and the intent of what might potentially go here. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I, just, the only thing I want to respond to, just for the record, the, the certified list, which I received from the township for 37 Bennett's Mills Road, provided me a dress, a mailing address for Williams, Elijah, at 1401 West Veterans Highway in Jackson, and that was provided to me by the township. So that's the address that's on record, and that's the address that I have to send it to based upon the municipal land use law.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. All right, I'm, I'm looking back at our participant list. The, the next hand up that I see is a Joseph Rashudi, and I do not see any other hands up. Let me just check. But Mr. Rashudi, you're up next. If you are there, come onboard, sir. Did I lose him? Anthony, do you have? Just comment, okay.
All right. He has to turn it on. Mr. Rashudi, can you please turn on your audio and video, please? Oh, there you go.
All right. You got it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Rashudi, you're raising your right hand, correct?
Yes.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you will present to the board or the applicant represent the, bless you, represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I swear.
All right, thank you, sir. Can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Joseph Rashudi, R-I-C-C-H-I-U-T-I, at 7 Cory Lane in Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Rashudi.
Good evening.
Do you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to raise based upon what you've heard this evening?
Yes, I do. Real quick, in regards to sewage hookup, what is the township's requirement for a commercial establishment? Are they required by the township to hook up if it is available, or can they stay on their septic?
Is that a question you're posing to Mr. Pfeffer or to Mr. Flannery?
Or anyone that can answer it.
That would have to defer to one of the, one of the professionals. Mr. Flannery?
The township doesn't dictate whether you use septic or public sewer. The, the county administers rules of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and it depends on whether you're in a sewer service area or a non-sewer service area. If you're in a sewer service area, you have the option to hook up to sewer. If it's within a certain distance, you have to hook up, but depending on the type of use, you may need sewer. So this particular site would definitely need public sewer for the proposed use.
So then, that would bring me up to Wawa and Speedway. They're not going to be required to hook up to this sewer system if the MUA puts it in, correct?
Well, the MUA would not be putting it in. A developer would be putting it in, and a developer would reach out to the, both of those sites. And once, once it's in, it would be an MUA line, and then the MUA line would be in front of them, and they would need to hook in. And my opinion would be that they would be happy to hook in if the sewer was available.
Well, because in the business, the bottom line, you want to make as much money as you can. And those businesses that have been there for quite a while are running on septic system. So it would not be beneficial for them to hook up and have a sewage bill every month when they've been getting by on what they have now. Am I correct in that assumption?
I, I would not think you were correct, because there's fees associated with septics. They need to be pumped out, they need to be maintained, and I think any business like that would be much happier to pay, pay a sewer bill every month that they know what it is than to have their business shut down by some septic failure.
So if I may, Mr. Rashudi, Mr. Pfeffer, just as one of your additional homework assignments, because there's sort of conflicting testimony, I think we need to verify and pin down whether or not, if you become in the sewer service area, if those two commercial establishments would be required to tie in, or if simply the sewer would then be available to them. Just so it's clear for the record.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Rashudi?
Yes. We've established this Starbucks drive-through is not going to be there, correct?
In fact, if, if I may, my understanding is that as part of the traffic study or request that the applicant's going to come
that the applicant's going to come back with, they're going to delineate uses. And it would be, quite frankly, at the next meeting that the applicant has made the representation as to what types of uses would be proposed on the site.
Correct. That's what we have.
Yep.
Okay. I'll wait till the next meeting because I have more questions. But it would depend on whether they get sewer or not is what my other questions were in regards to. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rashudi. Have a good evening. All right. I'm back to looking at our list. Anthony, I see a Mr. K. Hobbs with a hand up. Mr. Hobbs, are you there? All right. Mr. Hobbs, okay. Your video is off, Mr. Hobbs. Can you put your video on, please? I'm sorry, Ms. Hobbs.
Yeah, Mrs. Hobbs.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hobbs.
It's okay.
You can hear your, Mr. Gertner will now swear, yeah.
Ma'am, you're raising your right hand.
Yes.
Swear affirm that the information, questions, comments that you will relate to the board or the applicant shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Kelly, last name Hobbs, H-O-B-B-S, and I'm at 5 Mills Lane.
Good evening, Ms. Hobbs, Mrs. Hobbs, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions or concerns to the applicant as to the application you heard tonight?
So, you know, I'm trying to follow. I'm new to this. So basically, more information is coming, correct, about the exact uses?
That is correct.
Okay. But yes, I've spoken to a lot of my neighbors, and we absolutely would not want a building of this size retail across from our street in our neighborhood. We have Wawa, we have Speedway, we have, you know, those conveniences right there to add another big plaza right in our neighborhood across the street. Every time I pull out of my street is not what I've ever thought that space would become. There's churches there, there's homes there. Yes, there's a landscaping business, but nothing like a huge retail shopping plaza that is being described.
Is anything further, Mrs. Hobbs?
Nope. That's it.
I thank you for coming on. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. I'm back to looking at our list. Anthony, I'm not seeing any others. There's 27 on board, but I don't see any others with hands up. Do you agree? All right. In that case, members of the public, if no one else is coming on, I am now going to close the public portion. Public portion is now closed. Thank you. All right. So next up is, I guess, when to come back?
I wouldn't ask for a specific date. We're going to have to engage a traffic engineer. Once we get the report, we're going to have to do the studies. I'm going to renotice. So at this time, we're just going to ask for it to carry it. And we will renotice once we're ready to proceed.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and Mr. Pfeffer, thank you because particularly in these times, that offer to renotice makes the carrying of the matter much simpler as well. So I appreciate that.
And we would waive any waiver of time.
And the public should appreciate that as well, that there'll be a renotice. So with that, Mr. Chairman, application number three, variance number 3328, shall be carried from this meeting. Do you have just a general expectation? I know you haven't hired anybody yet, but...
We're going to have to get the traffic study. I'd rather not even say to the board, "I'm coming back," and then people are going to be upset in a month if I'm not here. We'll renotice.
You're right. So, members of the public, this matter shall be carried at this point indefinitely. There's an expectation that the applicant will be preparing and providing additional information for the board. But the applicant has agreed to renotice.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer.
You have waived time?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, I believe that concludes this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So carried, all in favor?
Bye.
Thank you. Everybody have a good night.